Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shenandoah City Council Meeting for February 12th, 2025. Look around and see that we have Councilman Jim Pollard is on excused absence. Otherwise, we have a quorum. We're going to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation delivered by Councilman Frank Robinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You would bow your heads, please, and join me in a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you, we praise you, and we worship you. We come before you with humble hearts and gratitude. Tonight, Father, as we conduct the business of the city, we ask that you grant us courage, compassion, and wisdom to do the right thing for the right reasons. Please surround us with your holy angels, Father. Keep our city safe. Bless our staff, our administrators, our public safety personnel. Of course, bless our military, and God bless the United States of America. We ask this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. First of all, I want to welcome Ms. Kate Funkhauser, who's filling in for our city attorney tonight.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item number five, Citizens Forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters related to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address council and give their name before sharing their comments. We don't have any speakers today. Okay. All right. Let's move on to item number six, Presentation of the CVP Annual Report. Ms. DeMainer.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here this evening, and for those of you who are new to the council, I put together this presentation. It's one we created about three-plus years ago, and I did it in order to highlight our performance for the year in as most succinct a manner as I could and for your benefit. So, we're going to be going through this report, and I'm happy to report to all of y'all, as if you've had a moment to look through this report. It is our second consecutive year of all-time historic high-performance measures. So, this next slide, what I really have, and it's really mostly for those of you who are new, and what's most critical in this slide is talking about our performance and the things of why we exist, who we are, and what our job is to do for all of you and your benefit. If you go down to the bottom three, those are the most three important things. We're here to generate higher levels of hotel occupancy tax by encouraging visitations and stay here in the city. We are encouraging guests to spend their travel dollars at one of the city's many hospitality establishments, and those are not just our hotels. Those are our stores, our shops, our restaurants. They are entertainment venues, all of those things that are travel-related businesses that visitors would come and do. And we market the city and all it has to offer through a variety of channels, including digital print and social media. So, this next slide, there's just a very small team of us, as y'all are all aware, I think. It's just Billy and me. So, it's the two of us. And we always try to work as smartly and efficiently as possible. So, the point of this slide was really to talk about, like, an example and provide an example of working smart and efficiently, all about that yellow Texas video shoot. Two years ago, we brought them in. We had segments on TV, and we were trying, while we did it, to bring them in and shoot a variety and ton of B-roll footage so that we could, in turn, secure and have that footage to use for other purposes. We turned that into, as y'all saw last year, the 30-second, 15-second TV commercials, which we utilize and we've done and used in a variety of formats. So, that's one example. We also are very fortunate in that we are working in a large metropolitan area and have the availability and possibility of working with two co-op marketing programs, the Around Houston program, as well as the state and Travel Texas. So, through those programs, we work in myriad channels. We have a place at the table with key partners, both regionally, because Around Houston is them and 14 other regional member cities, of which we are one, as well as Travel Texas. And we've been working with them in these programs, and as you know, last year, the big thing that I was so grateful to y'all in helping us secure through our proclamation as a tourism-friendly community, we got that, and we were in the first 10 CVP DMOs in the state to have that in their inaugural class. So, how do we do what we do in some of the works and highlights of all of that? Well, tonight, what we're really, what I'm going to try and focus on is really the highlights and everything here. As a two-person team, I wanted to give a major shout-out and props to Billy for the work that he is doing in our social media and helping assisting in our website. If you had a moment to look at these numbers previously, they're extraordinary. We're just blowing doors in all measures on all of our social media channels. We are currently actively working in six channels, and the engagement we have secured in all of these channels is really high, almost 8%, and it's improving every day. So, I just wanted to give him a proper shout-out for the work that he's doing, because that is a part, a key part, of what we're doing on our overall marketing efforts. So, what does this mean, and how does that translate to our hotels and their benefits? I wanted to talk about the marketing programs we're doing for the hotels. This slide is its most succinct way of me showing that you can look over the past three years or put there, but you see the increases from the previous year. So, if you look, this is really post-pandemic going forward, and you can see the extraordinary increases we've had year-over-year, both in room revenue that we generate for our hotels, as well as the actual room nights booked that we've done for our hotels. And those are coming through our efforts and our marketing channels and the programs that we're running. And I wanted to also say thank you for y'all giving us the funding and allowing us to continue our funding for our data intelligence marketing programs that we're doing. Those are a thing that it's taken us two years to kind of do that, to kind of put together and work with a variety of people to get more dashboards, more intelligence. And when you're as small as we are, having all that has made all the difference in the So, this slide is a slide that I kept from last, from the previous year's deck. I didn't update it with respect to the hotels, but it's basically to give an overview of the breakout of the types of hotels we have here. So, on the bottom line, from the earliest, you see that we have economy hotels. Next in the years, they started going to mid-scale, mid-level, and then we got some upper-scale properties. But the thing about this, that's most important about this slide, and I wanted to point out, are really the second and third paragraphs, which is, over the years, in 2021, we opened three hotel properties, which were the Aloft, the Even, and Hyatt House. It gave us a 31% increase in our new hotel room supply. That's a lot for any city destination to absorb. Those rooms have to be promoted. You have to get the word out. You're trying to keep them full, and you're trying to do that in a way, the thing that kept me up at night, was trying to do that in a way where we wouldn't cannibalize all of the room revenue for our other hotel properties, and could we generate enough to keep that going? And as you can see through our results and what we've done, we've been able to do that. And we've done that through our marketing programs, the comprehensive totality of all of the programs that we're doing. And those are creating an increase in demand, driving up the ADR and our occupancy at all of our hotels. And it's taken, really, I would say, over the last three years, that's been, we've been working really hard to, what I would say, is close the gap. Our market, and I don't have to tell y'all where we are and where we exist and who some of our neighbors and competitors, who they are and what they have, but you know, from a meetings/conventions perspective, we don't have any city-owned or operated meetings/convention space. We don't have city-owned managed major sporting facilities that we control and manage. So, therefore, and a lot of other destinations, they have those as part of their drivers to keep that pipeline going. So, I just share with you, there's news that has come out recently with other cities and neighborhoods. New Caney just announced, probably two months ago, that they're doing a $159 million project out in New Caney for a sports facility, and a meeting facility, I should say. It's kind of a combination of those. We've got other people. We know that our neighbors next door are going to be building new hotel properties, and they've got their luxury in, coming in with the Ritz-Carlton. We know that we're facing new convention space next door with Conroe as well. So, we just have to be vigilant and continuing to do our hardest and best work, which we will do. But every year, you know, our work is never done. Every day, new businesses open, new restaurants open, and we're just trying to keep the word out there and keep people interested in coming here. That's really our job at the end of the day. So, if you look, and what does that mean for us in the way of our hot collections? There you have it. This year, we were just shy of $2.15 million in hot collections. It's nearly a 16% increase over last year. And when you look at the previous years and those increases year-over-year, the previous year, we had a 24% increase year-over-year, and the year before that, it was a 54% increase. So, you're seeing, those numbers are all starting to kind of narrow, come down. We're getting in a post-pandemic, kind of getting back to a much more typical growth pattern and what's sustainable. And Charlie, I'm looking at you right now, because you know, when I said the last years, I said, "We can't keep this growth going like this. It's just not possible." We'll continue to do the best we can, but these numbers are showing that, and I just want to keep you in the loop. It's always, every day's a challenge, and we're doing the best we can.
But I know it's directly proportional to what you guys put into it as well.
Thank you. So, the funny thing that I want to, before I go on to this slide, what I wanted to tell you, the data intelligence. These next three slides that I'm providing to you, they come from one of our data intelligence vendors, which is Tourism Economics. And just for y'all to be aware of, Tourism Economics is probably one of the leading authorities, economic firms working in the travel tourism industry. They're part of Oxford Economics, which is a global company with 2,500 clients globally, worldwide, doing quantitative qualitative analysis. They have over 400 economists on staff, offices in 20 cities around the world. They're a lot. This year, it took us about a year to build out our dashboards with them, not this year, over this past fiscal year, I should say. We started it, and we kind of got them up and running towards this year, by the end of the year, and we were still working on tweaking things. So, when we did this, we have our dashboards and reports that we're getting, and I think you've seen the improved reporting in these reports that y'all are getting, and I think which y'all have at least come up to me individually, talked about liking the presentation the way that it is, much more digestible, succinct. So, we've got those done here. And one of the things that I wanted to share with you, as much to my surprise, in November, they had pulled out this kind of study and report. And I was hoping tonight to have our rep, who is Cindy Decker, and the former head of research and analysis for Visit Houston. That is her previous job. That's how I knew her. She went to go work for this vendor. She knows our market very well. And I was hoping to have her in to do this, but they put together this report for us, which they are referring to as a momentum report. And I had never seen it before. It wasn't something of heart, but they work with over 180 CVP DMOs nationally and internationally. So, what you have in this next point, that I wanted to show you in these next three slides, were-
Before, let me interrupt you before we go. Can you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
The third paragraph.
Yep.
Who is our competition that is, that we should be vigilant of?
Well, I think, I think when we're in the fourth-largest metropolitan area in the country, it's big, and we have all sorts of different drivers. But in the immediate competition, we have to be vigilant of what's going on in the woodlands. And for y'all to know, we have a two-person team. They have just hired up 14. They hired three new people this year and getting ready to hire a fourth. They've secured funding that they've had in non-traditional sources previously, through legislative efforts that they have done through securing their mixed beverage tax, which they didn't have previous to last legislative session. There's other things that they're doing. So, they're more flush. They've got their stuff going on. And Conroe, certainly, as it continues to expand, and as they have the new Convention Center Hotel, it's three and a half miles up the road. It's not far. And they are certainly, I'm watching in all of our sets, they're increasing their demand as well with those new properties. So, I think being vigilant in a market like ours, where we try to hide and be true to who we are and what we have, and the value proposition that's here, and we're located in the heart, in the middle of it. And y'all all know and live that reality every single day. And so, we've been very successful kind of embracing that and doing it. But I think every day, and as long as they continue to have new development, new things going on, that's part of what we have to be vigilant of, too. You know, it's, I'm so grateful that during my time here, we were able to get these new properties to come in. I know there's other things that y'all are looking at all the time. And so, that's just kind of knowing what the, we have both our immediate area, and then we have the greater area and what's going on. Because some of those other things, if you're looking at some of those drivers, oftentimes, I think I told y'all this last year, in my presentation last year, I would always prefer to be a first-in with something unique, rather than to come in and have something that there's three of in the marketplace. Because from the moment you do something like that, you're competing on price, maybe service, too, but that's what you're competing on. If you've got something new and unique, then that gives you a little leg up in whatever that is. So, I just say that, whether you're looking at hotels, whether you're looking at sporting facilities, whatever the case may be, those are really critical. And so, oftentimes, it's the person who gets that first beat on the ground, and then you're kind of in a catch-up mode. So, if that makes sense, does that answer?
Mayor, I have a question, too. As you know, I think, John, I participated years ago in the building of that convention facility and the hotel.
Oh, yes, sir.
And when we went through that process, knowing what we knew then about the future of probably hotel growth, especially in Shenandoah.
Yeah.
How necessary that was going to be to be able to support the room nights required to have the conventions we wanted to have. So, from that perspective, we looked closely at partnering with Shenandoah.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering, it's been a long time, and I haven't been involved in it in years, is there a partnership still existing between you, your group, and the Convention of Visitors Bureau?
Well, now, there's, in my opinion, what I would say is, when I arrived here, there didn't seem to be much conversation taking place at all. We were pretty much siloed, individual city and CBB doing their own things, more protective, if you will. And I think it's not anything, I want to take credit for me myself. I think it's a confluence of a lot of factors. But I think what has happened, we, there were new people coming on board and being involved in all the bureaus and doing that. And we have all, it's kind of a, there's a duality of all of that, because we sit on the Around Houston Board together. We go and see each other at the chamber. We have those instances, and when we got here and started having those conversations, we have to reutilize and recognize the things that we are different and distinct in. And so, where we can be complimentary, support, and help, I always want to do that. There are certain specific things, when you're going for meetings, say, or conferences, we're not the conventions, we don't have the waterway. We don't have 80,000 to 120,000 of square feet of meeting space. You know, we have one full-service hotel currently that has just under 5,000 square feet of meeting space, and then it's got 2,000 square feet of pre-function space. So, it can do somewhere between 200 and 300 for groups in multi, you know, it has air walls, can flex out, and multiple rooms. That's our largest. Of the 13 hotels that we have, the other seven with meeting space vary from about 400 to 600 square feet to about 2200 to 2400 square feet in configurations of a max of three rooms, maybe four in one case. So, you've got a room that is like a larger room with an air wall that could probably accommodate 70, 80 people in rounds. You've got a flex room in some cases, like a smaller meeting room, and maybe a boardroom in one property. So, those are the kind of things. So, we have different markets. We can't do conventions. We don't go after conventions. We're small meetings, corporate trainings, repeat businesses like that, doing reunions, all sorts of things. There's a number of other niches that we supply, but we don't compete with them because we don't have the space.
But we benefit from a lot of the national events that the Woodlands draws.
Absolutely, we do.
We have PGA, LPGA.
We get compression from all of the major things they're doing, and we don't have luxury, and we don't try to market ourselves as luxury. You know, the interesting thing is, we don't have luxury hotels or resorts. We are economy all the way up to upscale. That's where we are in our niches right now. So, I think we always have to look at those things where it makes sense, and we can work cooperatively. We want to work cooperatively. It's just smart and good.
Do you have any idea how well they're doing now at the convention, at booking conventions over there?
I think it's picked up, well, over the last year or two, it's definitely picked, just like elsewhere, it's picked up.
Do you have any idea how much that impacts room nights in our hotels? Are they still looking at us as overflow, or, you know, the more affordable rates sometimes, depending on the convention?
Well, one of the things you'll see here in these next three slides is what we've been very effective at doing in generating this demand through our marketing efforts is we have been, not only have we closed the gap, as I mentioned, with ADR, occupancy, and room revenue that we're doing, I shouldn't say room revenue, our demand, excuse me, with demand. And that's really my key measure over these, coming out of the pandemic, was looking at how much demand were we raising and doing. But we've been growing market share disproportionately. And so-
John, I jumped ahead a bit. Why don't we go into those three slides? Because that will explain a lot.
It will. So, let me, let me just go in here. So, the, what I was trying to tell you is, with Tourism Economics, they provided this momentum index, and they are using as a benchmark the full complement of their 180-plus CBB DMOs that they are working with. And when you see, there's an index. So, if you're at 100, you're at the average median with everyone else. So, what I wanted you to see was, and what I was hoping by bringing Cindy in tonight, she wasn't able to join us. She told me to let y'all know she was sorry. But we pulled these slides, she pulled these slides and got them to us in November, and I was kind of gobsmacked, to be honest, because you'll see that we are, once again, we're punching well above our weight, and that's what I want y'all to see on these. So, when you look at a lot of our CBB DMO world, of those, what are those key performance indicators? Your occupancy, your ADR, revenue per available room, the supply, demand, revenue. You can look across the board. We're up in every single measure and point. And you can look at the growth increase over the last three years of what we've been able to do and generate. When you go to this, this is more on the areas of that competitive indexing and where we're at. So, they go out and they looked at the complement of hotel demand and ADR growth, like air travel, the labor market, organic web sessions. So, what you can see in the hotel demand and ADR, we are indexing well above that baseline. If you look at the organic web sessions, we're, it's crazy. As little as we are in doing what we're doing, we're doing a great job there. And so, finally, when she pulled the, when I saw this for the first time and I was looking at this, the top 25 CBB DMOs are by total rooms that they have that are available. So, these are probably really big cities, New York, Chicago, Atlanta, Dallas, Houston. You're looking at them, and they're benchmarking, if you look at the year-to-date and their growth, at a 103.2. Non-top 25 are below that, a 101.4. All southern ones, slightly higher, 101.8. And, you know, post-pandemic, we talked about this when the pandemic was going on, we were open. We had a little bit of advantage and a jump versus the rest of the country. All DMOs are 101.7, and at us, we're up at a 115.4. So, like I said, it's one of those things, when I saw this, I thought this was something worthy of sharing with y'all, because it's not us saying it, it's not us doing this. This is them looking at the complement of their 180 CBB DMOs. So, is there anything else that I can answer, any questions for, for y'all tonight?
How many hotel rooms do we have?
1,402.
That's a good number.
Mm-hmm. 13 properties currently.
Yeah.
And those range in size, just so you're aware, from our smallest of 39 rooms to our largest at 152. So, we have no huge hotel properties that can, you know, like, by your max of how many people can you stay in a meeting or convention?
Right.
Yeah.
Is there a metric that tells us the revenue that we're realizing from the hotel stays? Like, what is the annual value to the general fund in terms of sales taxes?
Well, I can tell you from looking at the state, we generated 80.3 million in travel-related spending, as they benchmark it, by Dean Runyon and Associates. It's on their website and their data dashboard. And of that, 80.3, and that, so there's a lot there, travel-related. I mean, it's like rental car, gas, your hotel, your restaurant, your entertainment.
I'm just wondering, what does this mean to the average resident of Shenandoah in terms of how is this impacting my, you know, saving me money on my property?
On savings on your, on your taxes? That's a measure that we can work and get for y'all later.
Okay.
It's not something that I have right now. Other CVBs do that. Part of that is, one of the things that I'm working for right now under those kind of things is an economic impact calculator, if you will, for that, showing what our work and stuff does. And so, that's one of the things that we're trying to look at right now as-
I mean, it's all, it's all good stuff.
Yeah.
A lot of people are just interested in the measure of, what is this making for the city in terms of our sales tax?
Well, it's certainly helping to keep our resident sales tax among the lowest in the county. And, you know, I think right now, Lisa, I would ask you, but I think when I saw on that travel-related spending in local, sales receipts of 80.3 that was total, I think it said in local, it was 2.5 million for 2023. Does that sound about right?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I don't know. I was looking at that. These are what the state put out, so-
You should just ask her about the Eagles right now.
So, so, you know, like I said, but the bigger issue there is its profile. We're the only department that's really charged, just as our, as the laws and everything, of promoting the city and all that it has. And those things drive the impact on hit, those numbers that come back to local sales, that's general sales tax. So, it helps hit the inflow with-
I'll echo on that. So, as you see, our sales tax base is fairly large. Obviously, the 3,000 residents we have are not contributing totally to that.
Sure.
Sales tax revenue, and that's only 2% of the whole 8.25% that's collected. The other thing is that if you do look at your tax bill, the city elected, I don't really, I don't remember the year, but they elected to offset some of the property tax with sales tax. So, it's kind of a double dip, with sales taxes contributing to property taxes. And when you look at your tax bill, it'll say, if the city Shenandoah did not elect a sales tax, your bill would have been increased by $400. So, tourist- So tourism does play a huge part in the property tax scheme.
I'm just looking for what's the slice that tourism is adding.
Yeah. And the interesting thing too that I would share with you, when Lisa said that, when I gave this report last year from the state, and they run a year in arrears in their reporting over what we do, so I think those numbers that I told you, the eighty point three and the two point five, were for 2023. The interesting point of that, Lisa said, previous, last, a year ago when I gave this, we were at ninety-four percent. And you have to think about this, it makes perfect sense. In a town as small as ours, two point two square miles, with all that we have, five shopping centers, thirteen hotels, sixty-plus restaurants, all the entertainment venues, all the sporting facilities, that doesn't exist to serve our thirty-eight hundred residents or thereabouts. It's all those in the surrounding area. So when they look at that percentage, two years ago, it was ninety-four percent, as Lisa said. This year, ninety-five point three percent was given and quoted as the number as that that was supported by, generated by non-residents. So when you look at that, our residents are the piece of the pie of that tax that they're contributing to, and it makes sense. If you go to Dallas, if you go to Houston, if you go to a lot of smaller mid-sized cities, you're going to see that percentage be way higher because people who live there shop, dine, and eat there. In our case, as small as we are in the middle of all this, we have people from all around us. It's every day, when I got here, you know, some people are saying, oh, we're not really a destination. And it's like, au contraire. Every single day, people come and eat, dine, shop, and stay here. We're not the Grand Canyon, we're not the mountains of Colorado, we're not Las Vegas, but make no mistake, people are coming here, spending money, and leaving. And in that sense, we're more like a beach economy. It's strange because we're very urban and we have none of that, but yet, in the sense that people go to the beach, have a great time with their family, and then pack up and go, it's kind of a similar thing.
It would be interesting to know what the correlation is between our nighttime population and our daytime population.
It would be.
I don't know if there's a way that we can get that, but we should look into that because that's an interesting number.
Yeah, and we'd have to look. I mean, some of that is, but that would be interesting too. So I'll make a note, Ron, for you, to try and look at that tax number and whether or not there's a relatively quick way we can determine that. I don't know if there is or not. And I'll try to get back with you on that, and then I'll try to find.
Mayor, I have a suggestion for that. So far, right now, our daily reads on our flock cameras are a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand. So I didn't look up to see night per day, but I can possibly give you that.
Well, yeah, that's a pretty good number.
Mayor, I had asked a question earlier, and it was about the partnerships, whether, and you've made a real case for the, to me, a need to do that, frankly. I mean, we have, make a significant impact on the region's economy.
Absolutely.
We really do. And I wanted to ask you a question.
Sure.
For my education.
Yeah.
But I'm sure familiar with the Economic Development Conference, which, you know, is put on by the.
Sure.
CVB and the Chamber of Commerce there. And our mayor is going to be a guest speaker. But I was wondering, we're not featured as a sponsor anywhere, and I didn't know if that was something that this came out to print before we got on board, if we are, or we just aren't.
I've never even been approached to do that. And so.
Just curious.
And I think the difference is, you know, and you have to look at this too, from a city kind of department thing, you know, that's put on by the Woodlands Chamber, Greater Woodlands Chamber. It's not a city department, even though the city and Gill and his department, and now that he's retired, I mean, they have an economic development department.
I'll tell you what caught my eye was visit Woodlands, which is a marketing arm of their CVB, but then the City of Oak Ridge North.
Yes. And they go to our, they go to the Woodlands, the Chamber meeting. They're there with us all the time.
We are members of the Chamber, but we're not sponsors per se for events, which is something that we should discuss offline.
We do a lot of sponsorships for you to know for, and try to do that for like our hotels and new entertainment venues. We do the breakfast, they have their business after hours. So there's a number of things that we have done that we underwrite with them to do that. And, you know, what I was going to comment on the complimentary side of this, as well as partnerships, I think those things where it makes sense and you're able to do things like right now, as we get ready to open, and I'm sure y'all are all aware of this, with the opening of Breakthrough, we will be at nine indoor entertainment venues, five that have opened in the past ten months. And so when that happens, you know, we're working on a story right now that we're doing with one of our local media outlets right now, but we're talking about that and kind of raising the city's profile and doing kind of a, as an economic driver for a variety of audiences and niches for those kind of venues. And that's one of the things, when I was at the Chamber last month and we had our breakfast, Nick came up to me when I gave my remarks, and he was like saying, wow, maybe we should do something a little more, because that's one thing, it's like, like I said, if we both have the same hotels that are pitching a piece of business, you're competing against each other, and that makes sense. So you're going for the same thing, but if you're doing complimentary things or things that you don't have, we have these nine indoor entertainment venues, and they really don't have that where they are. If somebody wants to go to Gucci and Versace or Tiffany, we don't have that. So they would have to go over to the Woodlands to do that. It's that kind of reciprocity. You have to find what works and makes sense where you're complimenting, and you're both getting a win-win out of it, if that makes, at its simplest. So, you know, where we compete, we compete. Where we can support one another, we want to support one another.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much. This is very, very good news, great numbers.
Excellent.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item number seven. Discussion of possible action regarding engineering services for the HVAC project at City Hall.
Mayor and council, with the start of the new year, city staff advertised a request for qualifications for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering services. The purpose is to design the system that will be replacing our current HVAC here at City Hall. So on the twentieth, we received all the proposals, we got four proposals from very qualified bidders. We were really pleased with the companies that submitted. And after a thorough evaluation, talking to the company, talking to references, background research on those companies, staff is recommending awarding the engineering services to LEAF So the plan is that, that once LEAF, if LEAF has approved as their engineer, we'll meet with them, and we should be able to turn this around quickly, so by the next council meeting, they can get us a proposal for the cost of the design services, so that we can get that before council and get them started, working on the design of the system. The idea being that, once we meet with them, go over scope, have our rep with us, who does the maintenance on our system, because they know it like the back of their hand, that they'll be able to start design and have a good construction cost estimate, which then we can have ready for the budget workshop, so that we can discuss funding at that time for the replacement. So at this time, staff is recommending awarding the design services to LEAF Engineering.
Do you have a motion?
I do have one question. What was the consideration that LEAF stood above the other ones?
Good question. So, like I said, we had four very qualified respondents to our request. So what really put them above, one, was they have a lot of experience in renovation projects. Some of the other engineers that we looked at, they had a lot of projects under their belt, but most of those were new construction, which is different than what we're looking at here. We're looking at, we need to function in this building while construction is taking place. And when you've worked those projects in the past, you have an idea of issues you're going to run into versus a new construction. It's a lot easier to be in an empty building with open walls, open ceilings. So that was one major point that set them ahead of the others. Also, they are closer. So they have an office right here in the Woodlands. The others, their closest, were in Houston, which isn't a bad thing, but when you're going to be going back and forth so much, it's nice to have someone a little bit closer. They also had, everyone had great references, but those were the two, the first being the primary reason is that experience with renovation projects.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to award design services to LEAF Engineering Services for the city's HVAC project.
I second.
Can I have a motion to approve as stated by Councilman Brott, seconded, seconded by Councilman Summerlin? Excuse me, I'm chewing something. Any discussion?
I looked at the, they looked very reputable. I looked at the, everything you provided us, and it, I did some comparison myself, a little bit I could do, but, you know, I just thought it was very good, and it looks like a good deal for the city.
Great, thank you.
Additional comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, discussion regarding the availability of the pool parking lot. Discussion only.
If you recall, this was discussed at the last meeting, and there was some discussion, and then tabled for further discussion tonight. Not sure who wants to take the lead on that one, maybe Councilman Ray Maker? I'm not sure who wants to lead on that discussion.
I think I said it before, I just really wanted the hours to be consistent. I think Charlie's got a lot more history on it, of how it arrived at what it is, but I still think that they should be consistent. You know, it's, whether it's part of the park rules or an ordinance or whatever it takes.
Well, my problem with the language, Ron, is we basically are consistent. It's nothing but park rules that brought this before. I've talked with the police department, I've talked to the chief about the possibility and, you know, of having ill things happen at the parking lot. But it seems in all these years, nothing has happened really, other than a few people that have parked there overnight, they've run their plates, they know who they were, there was a camper there, but it was just the camper that I know of, wasn't anybody camping there. I just don't see if we're going to, if we just kept what we had, okay, if we got a rule that we've been going by in the park rules, that the park closes at ten, and that it doesn't address parking. Council did in 2015 deny any kind of restrictions on parking, but they wanted it in the park rules as well. So it's a tough thing to really, I'm not a fan of regulating things just for the sake of regulating them. And that's just me. That's my humble opinion, so.
So where is it, where is it regulated, if it's regulated? Is it in the park rules or someplace else?
That's all, that's right. That's what they adopted in 2015, was the park rules.
And it says ten o'clock?
Council at that time had a long discussion, before the meeting, before the meeting that they voted on this, going back and forth with the things in the park, because the park was just coming on. They were worried about people being in the park after ten o'clock, and if the police would come out and arrest them if they were. Greg Smith said that, oh, wait a minute now, if a person is just walking their dog through the park, that's one thing, they're not going to stop them and force them. If there was a lot of kids out there, or a lot of people parked there and having a little party by themselves, yeah, they did do that. The only other thing that, and I live close to the park, that I've ever heard loud noises were boys playing basketball after ten o'clock. And I know the officers have chased them out of there several times. I don't know how many complaints you've ever had, any, they just, during their routine travels through the city, they came across the chief, so. I just want to know if you still feel the same way I do as far as it being.
It's really a very extremely low priority on our part. There's not been enough, enough activity there to even think about it, to be honest with you. We just haven't had anything there. You know, like I said, a couple of cars parked there, officers, they see it sitting there for extended period of time during the night, go check on it. Some, like I said, some people have called us up well ahead of time, said, hey, you know, we're going to park a trailer there or something like that. Okay, how long is it going to stay? Is it going to stay for an extended period of time? And it's usually empty, it's not somebody camping in it, it's usually something, just leaving something for a couple of days, and then, you know, they leave, and we haven't had an issue with it as far as, you know, lots of cars staying overnight and being there. We just haven't seen that. It's just, it's really a low priority.
And as far as the other parks, Ron was mentioning being consistent across the Toddler Park and the Veterans Park and all of that.
Right, yeah. Anytime there's an issue, people, folks call us, we go over there, we run folks off, you know, we've had a couple of instances where they've came back and stuff, and we ran them off. I believe years ago, when I first started here, I believe before the park revamped, it was at ten o'clock too then, I believe so, years ago.
It was.
How about establishing a universal park, well, we do have the universal park rules, but making sure that they're publicized, so they, like, at the entrance to the park or several spots within the park, the pool park.
Put a sign up.
Put a sign up, just, these are the park rules, these are the hours, and.
Right, ten o'clock. Absolutely. That's what, I believe we had that years ago.
So we do have signage at the main park and the Toddler Park and Holly Hill. There is signage showing the, listing the hours that the park is there, and it has other things, you know, no alcohol, no overnight parking. Pets need to be on a leash, different rules pulled from Chapter Fifty-four.
Well, let's add that to the pool parking lot, as Councilman Ray Maker mentioned. So it's all universal. And I think that would solve, that would solve, you know, that issue. Anything else? Any further discussion?
No, I just know that every time that, living right by the park, the large park, at any time, I know that I've used, whenever I had an issue or anything, I've called the non-emergency line, and it's always been handled, so I appreciate that. As far as the hours and that, I don't, driving into the park, I don't see, I don't know where it's at, but I do see park rules on the trail when you first start to walk in. My only, you know, statement on that is that the sign, that if it's going to say hours of the park, would be more visible to drivers driving in, and not necessarily once you've gotten there.
Isn't there a sign adjacent to the parking right there? There used to be. Is that going?
So, Councilman, you're correct, the signage is there at the pedestrian, where the pedestrian pathways enter into the park, from pretty much all the main pathways. We don't have anything, as you drive in, large enough that you could easily read from a vehicle. So currently, we have signage at the pathways themselves. You're correct.
Let's internally see if we can get that done, get some visible, more visible.
Right. So would council like a larger sign at the main park? What about the Toddler Park and the Holly Hill Park?
I think all the parks should be covered.
Consistency.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because unless you're, unless you're going basically to the spray ground, you don't see those rules.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Or to the pavilion or coming in from the back. I guess. Um, I guess, I would have concerns with posting the signage at the Veterans Park because that's part of our pathway system, directly connected to our pathway system. And I know there's a lot of hospitals there, you got night staff that take a walk and if we put up signage, and now they're, you know, they're gonna be walking through a park clearly posted it's closed. So I, maybe we don't worry about it? Um, they can just walk past the signs that says it's closed or what? What's, I'd like to get an opinion on that. I can post the signs, that's just a concern I wanted to voice.
Mr. Mayor, my only cons, my only consideration on that is maybe a statement of no parking. And so that kinda alleviates the walking around that particular area, but, um, you know, saying, I think that's a, kind of a unique, that one's kind of a hybrid.
It is, that's why I wanted to bring that up.
It is unique because in Sunset, we only have three, three parking slots that are city slots. Everything else is private property, right?
Right, which is similar to the Holly Hill, there's only three parking spots there.
We designate our parks, I think, don't we? Like neighborhood parks, you've got one that's called a toddler park, do we do that?
Yes.
Do we have them divided into categories?
Just by name.
Just by name.
Okay. Well, park systems, especially if we're doing a park plan now, master plan, that will give us an opportunity to apply for state funding, grants and such, might want to consider actually designating varieties of parks, so that you have neighborhood park, a Veterans Memorial Park would be more like a regional park, so you could treat that differently than you would a neighborhood park. And that's kinda where I'm going with this, by giving them categories, then you can have rules that apply to one that don't necessarily apply to another. Depends on what council, you know, views as a, one designation over the other.
I'd like council's opinion as well.
Yeah.
Give that to Bill.
Yeah.
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 But that...
Because also we got its park rules.
Right.
Yeah.
If it's not ordained, it's nothing, it's just...
But I, I, since you don't like regulation, I'm a little uncomfortable telling the veterans I can't walk through the park after 10 o'clock at night if they wanna go over there.
That's true.
You know, it's a special place.
That's true. It is a, it is a subject that should be, this specifically, specific subject that we're talking about now, uh, is, uh, I think requires a little bit more, more, uh, more conversation as far as...
Yeah, I'm not thinking about, you know, doing a sweep or anything of the Veterans Park or you're walking your dog through the city park at night, that's one thing, but to give you something that, you know, you can chase off those kids, I mean, we did put up the cameras, you know, to do, you know, to deter anybody from doing damage, but it's just to keep kids that, you know, are walking behind Wellman Manor and between Sunningdale from getting boisterous, we've got something that we can refer to.
Yeah. Good idea.
Would it be, you know, I hate to prolong, prolong this, but would it be useful at a future council meeting to bring our current wording of our park rules as you walk into the park?
Yeah.
I know it's something that it's easy to not look at as you're at the park, especially when you get used to it.
Yeah.
But I could bring that back to council, 'cause there may be a consideration, like we're talking about the Veterans Park, hey, maybe it's not applicable here. And if we're gonna add a larger sign at the vehicle entrances to the other parks, maybe wanna change the wording a little bit and specify it to park hours, no overnight parking, whatever specifics we want to. It, it might be worth, I just, it's easy for me to put signs up, that's, and it's cheap. Uh, I just hate to go out and do that and then, that's not what I wanted. Those aren't the signs I wanted.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. I, I can put that together and have that ready for the next council meeting.
Okay.
Good.
Good. All right. Any, any more discussion on that subject? Nope. All right, we're gonna move on then. Um, item number nine, discussion regarding measures to address traffic control devices in residential areas. Now, earl- earlier this week, we, uh, we got together and, uh, we talked about a traffic study and talked to our, uh, our, uh, engineers, our, uh, traffic, uh, engineer and, uh, and you were, you graciously volunteered to, uh, to head the, a discussion panel, uh, to, to, uh, speak with residents, to get their input as to locations, et cetera. Would you, uh, would you address that?
Yeah, the discussion that we had was very well, very, very well done and the information that we got, uh, really gets kinda to the point to, um, to collect some more information and then also talking about a strategy that we're going to examine, uh, as far as having a focus group that the citizens were able to help us to identify some potential problem areas or areas of concern of going through stop signs, uh, by really the local residents and also the people who cut through and things of that nature, and discuss also some of the long strips, uh, that we have that are speeding. But it fell, the discussion also covered, um, the, um, traffic around, uh, all of Shenandoah and to discuss how the future traffic is going to also impact us. So, uh, the two kinda big things that came out of the discussion was what, to do a, um, traffic analysis, if you will, to get us current and not be referencing just an older one. And then also, the one thing that I thought would be very beneficial is having the focus group, that, uh, we have, a, a number of citizens have contacted me since then. And, uh, it is a, it's a wider concern than what I see and what, uh, one other, um, you know, resident saw consistently, that he came and voiced at one of our meetings. And so it's, it's a bigger thing and we really need to, uh, identify these, what could be considered hot areas or areas of focus sooner than later. But, uh, I thank everyone that were part of that meeting and the information that you provided.
So we just wanna make sure that the public knows that, that the city is looking into the issue, into the matter and that we are gonna form, or rather, a, a focus group is gonna be formed consisting of, uh, council and, uh, police and, and residents to gather as much information as can be gathered to address the, uh, the issue of speeding and , uh, stop sign, uh, not stopping at stop signs, et cetera.
I think we talked about that in November as well, where I remember asking about the enforcement zones that we had. So clearly PD knows the enforcement zones that they have.
Yeah.
And so bringing those two together about what, what police believe the enforcement zones should be, 'cause, I don't know, if you live near an intersection, you might think yours is the only one.
Sure.
But it's like, okay, well, at some point, we have to decide then what, what the control mechanism is gonna be, if it's announcing that these are enforcement zones so that people have an awareness, or if we're gonna put up devices that, you know, to say that pretty evidently by their appearance.
Yeah, there, there, there's an abundance of deterrents that could be considered, you know, to prevent this, uh, not all of them are 100% effective, but, but they are there. I mean, so people, some people are aware of what the zones are and what the dangers are of, you know, violating, uh, even minor traffic, uh, laws, so. Yeah, I agree. Well, thank you. All right. Any additional discussion?
The study, you mentioned a study?
Yes.
Are you all moving forward? Are you going to hire somebody to do a study?
The, um, as far as the study goes, I know there was a number of discussions as far as, we are currently, I think our, the existing study that we have was, uh, John, I'm not sure if this helped.
There was, uh, John, would you, uh, clarify, I know that the planning and zoning requested a traffic study be done.
Yeah.
But that was based on, on the redevelopment zone.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, so we would think, we were talking about maybe incorporating that study into the residential area.
Right. So, um, our traffic engineer is who you met with last week, I think the five of us that were in that meeting. And, um, so yes, uh, part of it is, is preparing a proposal eventually to do a traffic study. We need to know where that needs to be done specifically. Um, the redevelopment zone, you know, that's raised some questions about, uh, cut through traffic and, and things like that. And once that zoning change happens and things start happening over there, so that could be part of it as well. But I think the focus group, um, is a great idea, get input from the residents and then we could kinda take it one step at a time as, as we move along.
Correct.
We also talked about a, um, a traffic policy, uh, which we've helped other cities develop, uh, so that's something that, uh, probably we'll have more discussion about.
Yeah, that was one thing that I, I didn't write down to mention because we hadn't got the information on that, but, uh, as far as that enabling our citizens to feel like they have a hand in, um, inputting and identifying areas of concern that we can put in some traffic calming technology that might assist in, uh, remedying those areas.
Right. Could answer your question?
Yes. Thank you.
On, um, saying that, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that I would like to do is go ahead and formalize the discussion and to, uh, get a, make a motion to approve a traffic study and establish the focus group to evaluate, uh, potential, uh, locations to use, uh, traffic calming, uh, type of technologies.
We're gonna, we'll put that on, on the following agenda, uh, for the, for the next meeting. We'll put it on the agenda for, uh, additional discussion and vote on that, to establish that, that focus group. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number 10, city administrator updates.
Uh, I have two. Just one as a reminder, that City Hall will be closed next Monday for President's Day. And the second is a lot of work that's been going on for many years. Let's talk to Councilman Raymaker before the meeting on this, but the CCN transfer, the Certificate of Convenience and Necessity Transfer Agreement that we've been working on with the Tamina Community was finally executed today. And so that transfer is, been executed, it needs to go to the PUC, um, and then that will be turned over to the city. So it was a big hurdle, a big step needed to, to finalize that project and getting water and sewer services over to Tamina.
Is there any possibility that the PUC rejects or is this like a done deal?
It's, they may have comments there, so there's a letter that we need to send to them to follow their requirements of how deposits are gonna be handled. So that's really the only place they could have questions, so it's pretty much a done deal, but we need to work through that.
But it's not a done, done deal.
Not a done, done deal until the PUC pushes the button, I guess.
Okay, all right. Close enough at this point.
Yes.
It's a small step, but it's, uh...
I need one more transparency star.
But it's a, a big step for, for Tamina.
Absolutely.
It's a small step for Shenandoah, one giant leap for Tamina.
That's, that's a good way to put it.
Yeah. Is that it?
Yes.
All right. Council equity. Councilman Redmond.
I have three things. Um, the online check register, could we just please post that as we approve them each month? Uh, there's no reason to wait for audit to complete, they're not gonna modify what we say.
Well, there's transactions that happen after the year and we have to post it back. That's the...
I'm just saying, just, you just need to post the ones that we approve month by month.
They are, they are in the agenda packs as well.
I'm just saying to post, post them...
So I can put the PDFs without the searchable.
Post them under the financial transparency section.
Yeah, so I could put the PDFs on there, but I'm not, to alleviate extra work later and confusion, we'll just do the PDFs until the audit's complete and then we'll do the searchable ones.
Yeah, just so that there's not these gaps in, in time like we've got right now.
Typically, our audit doesn't run as long as it has, it's just, there was a lot of...
No, it's about normal for us. Anything from January, from January to March, I've seen over my time.
Yeah, so, um, that's the big hesitant, um, because we do do our audits so early, there are vendor payments that are still pending, so we make sure that those are all post-dated in the correct fiscal year.
I'm just saying, get them up there month by month. Okay. Um, then I'd like to have an agenda item in the future here to discuss having two passes at certain agenda items, one discussion and another for action. I'm willing to entertain possible exceptions, but sometimes we don't have enough notice to fully research and have questions heard. Can I get somebody to second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you repeat that?
We would have essentially, for some, uh, for some topics, we'd have a discussion item without having both discussion and action. So we've had some times where, yeah, we're not getting a big runway to, to see some of the things and we could get more questions asked upfront.
Could be purchases or ordinances or reservations.
And I'm thinking of exceptions of like, well, fine, if there's a, you know, if we got a purchase order or something that we've approved at budget and, and a car becomes available, then that's another matter, but I'm willing to hear what the exceptions are. Y'all will have to tell me what the exceptions are, um, so that we've got some consistency on those.
All right. We'll put that on the, uh, next agenda.
And then lastly, I, I think it should be an executive session, but I'd like an executive session to get an update on the PID. I, I just wanna get an update on details of the PID. If I could get a second on that.
Uh, second that.
Thank you. And then lastly, I wanted to say happy anniversary to Commissioner Wheeler because we always had to have some meetings where his anniversary was on Valentine's Day and, uh, so we always had a good laugh about that every time Valentine's Day came, so, just was remembering. That's it this week.
I have nothing at this time.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Just, uh, one item. Mayor, you appointed a, a committee to review with staff internally about the SHARC agreement.
Yes.
And I'd like to tell you that we've had a couple of meetings, conversation's gone very well and a new document's been created. We understand that it is in review with the SHARC, uh, group, but we anticipate our city administrator will put that on the next agenda for council action.
Great. Happy to hear that. I have, uh, I have two things. I, uh, I'm happy to inform the city that the city now has a seat at the HGAC, uh, TPC, at the council. So, uh, I was, uh, dominated by Judge Kio and, and voted in, so we have a seat there now.
Awesome. That's great.
Good news. And like, like Councilman Robinson stated, uh, at the Chamber of Commerce AOC coming up on the 21st, I've been invited to give a state of the city, uh, presentation. So, we'll, our footprint, uh, and thanks to the, uh, to CDB and everybody in the city with the, what we're doing in the city, we are, our footprint of, uh, two and a half square miles is, is constantly growing, uh, in, in image, not necessarily in, in, in geographic, but, uh, we're getting a lot of attention from, uh, all over the state and that's, that's, I'm happy to see that Shenandoah is, is coming out of the woods.
Right. That's exciting.
Standing up there. So that's, uh, that's, that's, oh, that's all I have. We're going to go into executive session. Uh, the time is 7:10. Uh, according to Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code is follows, Texas, Texas Government 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Consideration and if determined appropriate, take action resulting from the items listed under executive order. So 7:10, we're gonna go into executive session, we'll be back shortly. So 7:10, we're going to go into executive session, we'll be back shortly.
I sent an email about, yes. Let's make sure I sent you this one. I did.
We are going to adjourn the regular session of Shenandoah City Council at 7:33 PM. Good night, folks.